Good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting of City Council to order. We will observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Although the agenda does not look too ominous this evening, we do have a lot going on. So up first is, we have a recognition. Mr. Wykoff and Mr. Gregory, we celebrated here last fall the 10th anniversary of having the VIPS program as part of our City Police Department. And we have some members of our VIPS here with us this evening for some recognition. So either one wants to take the podium and begin that presentation?
Mayor, before I kick it over to Steve here, just a quick introduction of this program. This is something that we typically do in December, but Mother Nature has definitely not cooperated with us this year. So we kept kicking the can until finally we arrived at tonight where we recognize our VIPS volunteers for their annual contributions to the City of Buchanan. This is for their contributions through 2024. Typically, this accompanies an annual report, which I think Steve will touch upon real quick. This report's also included in the Buchanan Police Department annual report, which again I'll touch on as well under my report later this evening. Tonight, we not only honor the commitment of our VIPS volunteers who give so freely of their time and their services with no pay in return. This is what I've always felt. It's community policing at its core and a commitment to your community and giving back at its core as well. In addition to honoring their commitment to these things, we also, and this is a program that we've been involved in for a number of years, bestow the Presidential Volunteer Service Awards on the various recipients tonight. So without further ado, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Steve to explain a little more of the VIPS contributions in 2024 and the significance behind this awards program before we proceed.
Thank you.
All right. So yeah, as you, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, we are on our 10th year. And I'm happily surprised. When we first started way back in 2014, we had our inaugural meeting on October 22nd, 2014. And we were originally sponsored by a $10,000 grant providing basic uniforms and equipment to the volunteers. At that point in time, Matt and I had brainstormed just a group of community members that were interested in finding out more about the police department and maybe helping with some traffic here and there and stuff like that. That view, that vision has changed drastically over the course of the past decade. We've gone beyond just a PR aspect and a traffic management to include even emergency response. And over the course of our 10 years, we've had four emergency responses that we've assisted with. And our group just continues to grow. We've aligned ourselves with Kalia now. So we are receiving almost identical training to the officers with a few minor exceptions. One, we're not allowed to play with firearms yet. And two, none of us have gone down to the State Police Academy. So I'm honestly not sure if I'd be able to survive that at this point. But we do have a lot of very similar training there. And that allows us to be a force multiplier for the officers, not preventing them from doing their job, but actually assisting them in their, allowing them to perform more enforcement style activities and tasks. And we can help with more on the administrative and PR side of things. So right now, we ended 2024 with 12 active members. I did mention that we have adjusted our training to align with Kalia and the NIM system. Our training does cover ethics, basic medical search and rescue, triage, multi-casual incident or MCI management, so on and so forth. And when we realigned our training with the Kalia and the officers, we bumped up our training hours a little bit. So in order to be a VIPS member, the basic training, you're going to put in around 80 hours worth of training just to enter into the VIPS program. Once you get into the higher positions, the command staff, including the task supervisor, the assistant coordinator, and myself, the hours start climbing closer to about 100 to 120 hours worth of training. So the training is there, is a significant amount of training, and that is above and beyond what our volunteers do in regards to helping out with events and attending meetings and whatnot. In the annual report, which I hope you guys all have a copy of, if not, we can get that to you, there is a list of current training requirements and recommendations on pages eight and nine. However, that was not, this report was prepared for December and was not updated for the Kalia standards as well. That's going on right now. So that information is a little outdated, unfortunately. In 2024, we assisted with 115 public and private events by providing traffic control, foot patrols, and enhancing public relations with the community. We did have one public health-related event, and we were lucky enough not to have to deal with any emergency responses in 2024. There is a complete list of events that we assisted with in 2024. So that's on pages five through seven. We also assisted the department with other administrative tasks, business security checks, ride-along details, things along those lines. Our entire organization donated over 2,100 hours in 2024, again allowing those officers to tend to more enforcement-related activities. And that equates to almost $59,000 if you place a value, a monetary value or a dollar sign on a volunteer hour. It comes out to about $59,000, $59,000 in labor basing on $28.17 per hour. So I know you guys like the numbers with the dollar signs in front of them. So there's a chart on page two, which breaks down the hours for everybody. And then in regards to the 10-year anniversary, there is an additional chart that we haven't seen before in previous years that talks about the lifetime hours for the current members as well. In regards to the 10-year anniversary, again, our first meeting was October 22nd, 2014. We've had over 140 meetings since that first meeting. We've attended over 1,000 events during our program. We've had four emergency responses. And we've had 58 members wear a VIPS uniform over the course of that decade. We're not, toss the average age statistic in there, we're going to skip over that one. It's about 53 or so. We've donated or volunteered over 18,000 hours over the course of these 10 years with a total value of over $500,000. So a significant amount of volunteering from our members. Over the course of the 10 years, we've had three members receive gold PVSA awards, 16 members received silver, and 30 members received the bronze awards. And since I mentioned the PVSA, we are going to move on to the Presidential Volunteer Service Award, and we're going to recognize, or I'd like to ask that we recognize, I should say, don't want to dictate the council. I'd like to ask the council assistant recognizing our members for their volunteer time this year.
So you want to start with the, call them up through the city certificates, and just give me just a second to kind of get organized.
Sure.
And as you call their names, I'll get their PVSA's and their respective, and Mayor, if you could join us to help.
Sure. Ready? I have been honored to be in a leadership position for the VIPS program for quite a while. But even though I'm in that leadership position, the program would not have survived without the support of the members, the volunteers, not only the ones that we have here this evening, but the ones that we've had in the past as well. So it's those members that really drive the organization and make the organization what it is. So we'll start with the bronze PVSA recipients. These bronze recipients have donated anywhere between 100 to 249 volunteer service hours for 2024. So starting with Randall Tenney, Randall donated 234 and a quarter hours this year. David Rowan volunteered 129 and a half hours this year. Get a picture?
Look over here, David.
David.
Look at him, better not be giving me bunny ears.
All right, thank you. One of the, one of the awards that we gave out at our 10-year anniversary was the Founder's Award. And the Founder's Award was created to recognize those members that have been with us since the inception of the VIPS program that began in 2014. And I'm happy to say that there were two original members that started in this program that are still with us today that received the Founder's Award at the 10-year anniversary. One is David Rowan, and the other is Steve Wykoff.
See, the next bronze recipient is Andy Cartier with 183 hours. Thank you. You want, you want your picture up here?
Yeah.
I've got Alan Nash listed, who unfortunately could not make it this evening. However, he did volunteer 134.75 hours. Next up, we would have Robin Simons with 156 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Perfect. And here. All right.
Gerald Thompson also volunteered 121 hours. However, he was unable to make it this evening as well. Moving on to the silver PVSA recipients, we have Vito Siski with 289 hours, excuse me, 289.75 hours.
Don't forget that .75.
I would also like to note that we've got Ashley Seitz is a member of our VIPS group as well. Joined a little late last year, so we didn't quite get her into the PVSA awards, but she is a member of the VIPS, and she put in almost 30 hours from the time that she joined last year.
That means photo.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We'll have to get Randall back up here for a picture, too.
Yeah, I guess it's me.
And then last but not least, Steve Wykoff, who receives the gold award tonight for volunteering 513.75 hours.
All right, thank you.
Right here.
And while we're talking about hours, just to toss out there the lifetime hours. Over the course of his 10 years, David has put in 3,025 and 3/4 hours for VIPS. Vito's not far behind him with 1,732 and a quarter hours. Evelyn cannot be here this evening, Vito's wife. However, she has 1,119.5 hours. Andy Cartier, 934.75 hours. Robin Simons, 324. And myself with three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six. Since it is the tenth anniversary, and we were talking about events, I'd like to read all the events line by line that we threw over the past.
He went to my school.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, for allowing us to come in and recognize this great group of volunteers. Again, they do a lot for the community, goes unsung a lot of times, and there's still people in the community that don't know that VIPS exists or what we are, so we're working on remedying that. But these guys put in a lot of time away from their family, away from their friends, away from vacations and whatnot, and they volunteer that time to give back to the community that they love.
Aren't you gonna read the list?
I can do that, yeah, absolutely.
If you go to Dave's house, if you go head to Dave's house at about eleven at night, we're waiting for you.
Bedtime story.
It'll be a bedtime story, exactly.
Three, three things, Steve. One, you can, you can read the list, but we're, you know, we're shutting the lights off. I don't know who you're reading to. Secondly, I think it's very safe to say that, you know, the VIPS organization has been around for ten years largely because of your leadership. We, we would not be where we are without you. This community is tremendously blessed to have you as a part of it. You've taken this program and run with it, and it kept it not only together but flourishing and continuing to grow. So we, we are in debt to you. We appreciate everything that you've done for the organization, for the, for law enforcement in Upshur County, for our city. So we, we really appreciate everything that you've done very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's, that's very true, we feel that way.
Thank you.
And the third thing is, we have nearly three-hundred streets and alleys in our, in our lovely city. I am the mayor of all of them but one, Lightburn Street, because right there is the mayor of Lightburn Street.
There you go.
Well done.
You got the best.
Yeah. Well done.
So again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It would be safe.
Yeah. Up next, we, we've got a flurry of activity before we come back to law enforcement here in a little bit to hear from Chief Gregory. First up, I'll go back to the agenda, is approval of the meeting minutes from the sixth. If there are no additions or corrections, entertain a motion that we approve those minutes.
It's moved.
So should Mr. Ringer's or a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Randall. All those in the committee, how do I say? Aye.
Aye.
Likes and oppose, that motion carries unanimously. Your event, your report of events, correspondence, and information is on the very back page of your agenda, just turn one. First, on events and correspondence and information, we have the reminder, the rescheduled city council meeting. We are not having it on the sixth because of the Buchanan Upshur Chamber of Commerce Dinner that, that happens that night, so we'll be moving into Tuesday, March fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Again, we hope everybody can attend the chamber dinner, so we will not be having our meeting that evening. We have the Charles Gibson Library Director Report for December twenty-twenty-four. You saw, and it was pointed out in my State of the City address, the action needed to help with St. Joseph's Hospital and the Certificate of Need process. I will provide more information before the end of the meeting on how that's going. We have the report of the cat and dog activity from the Upshur County Commission from January twenty-twenty-five. We have accepted registrations from the Buchanan Police Department Citizens Police Academy and Community Emergency Response Team training courses. We have the Kalia Public Comment Portal, that address is listed there. And then the Special City Council Budget Working Sessions, both on February twenty-fourth at nine a.m. and February twenty-eighth at nine a.m. That is a Monday and a Friday. Alright, and then upcoming events at the Event Center at Rushy Fork, we have at March sixth, again, the Buchanan Upshur Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner. We have March twenty-second, the Central West Virginia Friends of the NRA Elimination Dinner. We have April twelfth, the Seth Project Gala. April nineteenth, the Upshur County Shrine Club Elimination Dinner. And then April twenty-sixth, the Buchanan Upshur High School Prom. Slate of activities for the Event Center this spring. Feels good to say spring, doesn't it? Alright, we only have, and I asked him to come this evening, we have our Executive Director of the Upshur County Development Authority here this evening to share with us some updates, some projects that the Development Authority is working on, and introducing him to you all as the Director, because one year ago, that was my position. So Brandon, welcome, this is Brandon Tenney, we're happy to have you here, and he's gonna share some, some project updates with us.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you Mayor Skinner for inviting me and allowing me to give an update. I am standing here as the Executive Director because Robbie decided one day to call a special meeting and drop in my lap, hey, good luck, I'm leaving. So, I served under Robbie as the Assistant Director for about a year and a half before Robbie moved to the bank, and I took over the Executive Director as he left. So we've continued a lot of great progress that Mayor Skinner had made in the position. So just thank you for letting me come and talk to you, and before I get started, I do have to give your city fire department a big thank you. One of our tenants actually decided to set off the smoke alarm and the fire alarms this week, and the city fire department was there a matter of minutes, being able to, thankfully there was no fire, it was just a lot of smoke, and they came and made sure everything was okay, the alarm was off, and checked out the room, that the incense was actually just burning in, and set off the smoke detector. So a big thank you to you guys, as well as the city fire department, because it was very quick, and they were able to help me kinda get all those alarms out of the way and make sure that there was no actual danger to the building, as the other floors evacuated and were very worried, and lots of calls to my phone of, hey, what's going on? Because they didn't know where it was coming from. I do wanna just point out how great the city has been a resource to the Development Authority. So one of the things that we've been working on majorly was the facade grant. So without your guys' office being able to tell us who was in compliance with zoning, permits, and things like that, it would've made it very hard for us to even do the facade grant that you guys so graciously helped us fund. So a big thank you to those individuals as well. And a lot of our projects that we have going on have to do with floodplain, as we know a lot of Buchanan City is in the floodplain, so we do a lot with that. So Jay's a big help on that as well, and, you know, the waste departments helped us on several occasions. We actually had to take out some of our hot water tanks recently, and the individuals that replaced them threw them in our dumpster. And so I got a call early Monday saying, you know, hey, we can't have those in the dumpster, but if you put them beside it, we'll go ahead and take those out to the transfer station for you guys. So that was a big help and kind of a relief off of my plate that I didn't have to figure out how to get them there. All we had to do was take them out, so that was great as well. And as you know, Mayor Skinner sits on our board as the mayor for the Development Authority, so he helps out with a lot of our projects, gets to know, and I know I've talked to several of the council members about things, especially Mr. Zuliani, I've picked his brain quite a bit, his business savviness is not, you know, unnoted, so when I get a chance, I get to spend time with him, I like to pick his brain as well. And Mr. Sanders and I have sat down a couple of times and talked many ways of, I think that the city is such a great resource for us at the Development Authority, but we wanna make sure that we're a great resource for you guys as well. So we've kinda just had some conversations back and forth, how we might be able to do that, whether it's, you know, when our worlds kinda collide in economic development, if we're attending meetings on your guys' behalf, or gathering information, things like that. We wanna be a better resource to the city as well. So to get to my updates, we do have several noteworthy aspects, and I'll try to keep it pretty brief, I heard some of the council members might wanna watch some hockey later, so I'll try not to take too long. You know, a lot of the things that we do in economic development, it's great to share after the fact, some of the things we can't share during, because it might jeopardize the projects, so there are a couple of things that I'll just touch on tonight that I can't dive into great detail on, which is, it's hard, you know, you like to, you find a project and you start working on it, you wanna go out and tell everybody about it, but it's important, as we've seen locally sadly recently, that some projects we talk about and then it might not come, so we just, I try to not, you know, talk about them too early, and I like to, behind the scenes with our board and things like that, to be able to get them to a point where we can bring them to you. So, as I said before, the facade grant is one of the great things that the Development Authority, I've actually inherited that from Mayor Skinner, was working on that before he left, and I know the city was a big part in the funding for that. We are hopeful that we can continue to do that with the partnership of the city to be able to fund those projects. So this year so far, we've had seven businesses that we've helped, so we have about one grant left, and I think that if you looked at all these places, you would actually see the great change, and I'll just read them real quickly. So the Convention and Visitors Bureau was one of our first applicants that received the grant. The Upshur County Airport, they actually did a sign, a new sign out by their airport, which looks really good, it needed updated as well. Woody Ventures, they've put a lot, they've put over fifteen thousand dollars into the car wash down there, so there's still a lot to go, they, they have great hopes to turn that even more. They've shown me some of the before and after pictures, and that's something that we're actually gathering now. We're trying to get all of the projects before and afters, put a little something to put into my Buchanan and market that, what great things the city and, you know, the Development Authority have been able to do because of that funding. Upshur County Parish House, they replaced a lot of their signs as well. Country Blooms, they've done over thirty thousand dollars of work on the building that they actually have. The Squire on Main did a lot for their signage and stuff, I know that they've put a lot of money into their building in general. And then the Lazy L Enterprise is actually the most recent, they're actually doing all of the windows and doors on Main Street of that building, the Trump Salon. So that's a lot of, you know, good things that I think that we're seeing from that facade grant. The housing study is something else that the city was actually a part of funding, so the state decided that they were going to do a statewide housing study based on our region. So we're in Region Seven, planning the Development Council, so that is our region that is through our housing study, and it will be done in March. So I was actually talking to Daniel today, he's with the West Virginia Extension Office, so he's hopeful that they're on timeline for that, that the state study will be issued in March, and I asked him, I was like, can I get any more details? He sent me a preliminary study, he's asked me just not to share it. So it, I think it definitely hits what we were looking for with the housing study and what we were trying to find out. A big part of that is when developers come in and they wanna see what kinda housing we need, if we can't show them a study of why we actually need it, it's just hearsay for them. So it's hard for them to actually go and develop that, those houses, or townhouses, or, you know, low-income homes that we might say they need. This housing study is able for us to market that and actually bring in those, the right type of housing, and the right price point for those housing. So I'm glad that they decided to do it at the state level, but then after that, they're going to do a county for our Upshur County that we're purchasing. They're hopeful April, but probably more towards May. So that's been delayed a little bit, we originally thought ours was gonna be done in March, but because the state study has taken so long, and I know actually the Planning and Development, or the Planning Commission has asked me to come and talk about the housing study in more depth, I think Mr. Sanders is on that as well, and they've asked me to come, so we'll have the statewide study for our region in March, hopefully, and then they will have started, or getting started, on our county study as well. And that's just gonna kinda narrow it down to what we have. It's good that it's in a region, because we have a lot of people that live in Upshur County that work elsewhere, or a lot of people that live elsewhere and work in Upshur County. So we'll be able to see that with the region study a little bit better than we would if we were just doing the county, so we'll have both of those as a great asset to us. I do wanna talk about, a little bit about business expansion and working with the landlords. So there's several new businesses in the upcoming year that are planning to come into Upshur County, most are expanding. So I can't talk about a lot of them in detail, but I do know that a lot of them have bought land, and they'll be developing and building land and expanding, and they're all types of industries. And then a few actually are working on leases with local landlords, and we actually help with both sides of that. So we help the people that wanna come in, so let's say we have a restaurant that wants to come in and expand in Upshur County, we'll help find them a location, and we'll help work with that landlord and them to close that deal. A big part of that is the Small Business Development Center as well. Suzie Higgins, our local business coach, who's actually retired, but still helps there part-time, because she knows what a great asset it is to us, and they haven't found anyone for her position yet. So she helps us with those a lot, to facilitate those deals and make sure they're getting the proper funding that they can receive. And then we work with the, just the local landlords and landowners to find good tenants that's a good fit for all of us. So we want it to be good for Buchanan, good for Upshur County, but we also want it to be good for the tenant and the landlord as well. We don't want people to just go ahead and leave within a year or two. So that's kinda the sides that we do for that. And then we also market them on our websites, so we have a lot of sites right now that are sort of industrial or manufacturing sites that we park on our website to market them, as well as the state website. The state website has a little bit more of a criteria that you have to meet, so there's not a lot that can go on there, but there are some. And then we actually have a local business that's expanding and kinda changing and adding to their industry, so we're helping them with that as well. And then, just a big part of what I do is retention visits, because we all know that we wanna bring business into Upshur County, you know, we are the Development Authority, but a big part of that too is retention. So we've talked to a lot of the major businesses in the area, and I know Mayor Skinner knew a lot of these people, you know, personally as well, so he spent a lot of time with them. I've had to get to know them a little bit better, and I think, you know, we've done that a lot. And a big part of that is the state training. So state actually gives some funding for training for these major corporations and manufacturing jobs, and a lot of our businesses in Upshur County have taken advantage of that. Coreheart is one of the most reasons, and they actually, the state did a really good job to have a quick turnaround of a week to get them some funding for training that they needed. We're actually working on a larger company that's local in Upshur County. They're a part of a bigger corporation, and we're hoping and working on currently bringing another part of their corporation here. So it's a big thing that the Development Authority's been doing, I've had several meetings even this week to talk about where they could locate. We've presented them with land, and we're hopeful, that's about all I can say at this time, but, you know, hopefully in the next coming weeks, I might be able to come back and give you guys an update that we've landed that company as well. Another big part of the Development Authority's action is the tower project, which was an eight-year project in the making, which is finally coming to a sort of close, and now we have four towers, and we actually work on maintaining and overseeing those. So a big part of that tower project is the Walkerville Tower. Mayor Skinner and I beat our heads against the wall, so to speak, trying to get a tenant on that tower. And we have had discussions with local parrier this week, and they have said that we're in the final phases of actually getting them to be a part of that tower. So that'll be a big win for that tower project, and thankful that, you know, we have the four towers and it should be wrapping up, but, you know, that's still, we have to oversee those sites and work on the leases for those and try to get some revenue off that. And then just finishing up, I just wanna briefly mention the Innovation Center. So as I'm sure Mayor Skinner knows, it's a big time and consuming resource for us. I spend a lot of time, you know, just helping tenants there. So we, Mayor Skinner was doing a great job of working on cutting the expenses, especially with the Innovation Center when I got on board with the Development Authority, and he kinda tasked me with finding more ways to cut, so without, you know, jeopardizing what we were doing there. So I continued that initiative as his Assistant Director, and then I've kinda continued that a little bit more as the Executive Director, and I think we're at a more comfortable place with the Innovation Center now. It's full, so we have it completely occupied, we actually have a little bit of a waiting list, so I think that's a good thing. We've worked on some of the leases that could be worked on, to be able to make sure that we're maximizing what revenue that we can get off of that. And honestly, it's more about the asset that it brings to downtown. A lot of those businesses wouldn't be able to be on Main Street if it wasn't for the small local offices that we have on the second floor. So I wanna let you know there are fifteen businesses in the Innovation Center, and that's a wide range, so we have all the way from larger companies to small, just local, just one person owns their own business, and that's the only employee that that business has. So it's a wide range, and it's definitely a lot of different individuals and different businesses in there. We've worked on some of the leases that could be worked on to be able to make sure that we're maximizing what revenue that we can get off of that. And honestly, it's more about the asset that it brings to downtown. A lot of those businesses wouldn't be able to be on Main Street if it wasn't for the small local offices that we have on the second floor. So I want to let you know there are 15 businesses in the Innovation Center. And that's a wide range. So we have all the way from larger companies to small, just local, just one person owns their own business and that's the only employee that that business has. So it's a wide range and it's definitely a lot of different individuals and different businesses in there that make it up. We actually hired a part-time assistant as well. When I moved to the Executive Director role, that was kind of a void. And for a couple of months, I was working on both. So Jennifer has been great to help us come out and just work on some of that clerical and administrative stuff so that I can focus on the retention and the expansion. As I mentioned before, the Small Business Development Center with Susie Higgins, they have a place in our Innovation Center and they are a major partner. I mean, you know, we try to work with all the small local government and things like the hospital. I know the CON is a big thing right now. I've spent a lot of time talking to Skip about what we can do. And that's kind of what we view the Development Authority for. You know, we work with the Chamber and the airport and all those other small local governmental agencies to try to just work together and push forward for the good of Upstate County, especially when it comes to things like our hospital. And the last thing that I just want to leave you with is we've really worked on our marketing for the Development Authority. I know that we actually did a study before Mayor Skinner was even there. Jennifer Boston was the previous director and she did a study and found that not a lot of people in Upstate County know what we do. And, you know, so we've tried to market just how we're helping businesses, not necessarily to get us recognition, but just so that people were aware, you know, of a service that we can provide. Because a lot of people don't even know about the Small Business Development Center. And I think that's crucial for these small businesses in order to know, maintain what they're doing. Especially, you know, after COVID, a lot of things changed. And just help them be the best they can so that we can make a good Upstate County. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any involvement or any movement going on with the Novellus Building?
Yes, we do. So that's one of the ones that we've actually worked on marketing. We've worked with the state as well as Novellus on that site. As you all are aware, there are worship issues with the site that have sort of worked out. I know that they have it listed now. I'm in contact with their corporate as well as their old plant manager here. They've kind of left it in the hands of a broker and a real estate agent. And we're trying to work with them and market that the best we can. Our best thing right now is working with the state to try to find, you know, some sort of industrial or manufacturing plant that would want to locate there. Because we have some interest in it. But the big thing for us is 80 jobs lost, you know, and a lot of revenue lost from that building. So we don't want it just to turn into warehousing. We've had a lot of inquiries about that. And, you know, local companies saying, you know, we could use it for warehouse, but we know that's not what you're looking for. So the major thing for us, like I said, is just all those jobs. And I actually worked on compiling a list when Prime Six was supposed to locate here on all the people that lost their jobs from that or just needed a place to have a job. I think we had over 90 names at the time. So, you know, those individuals are something that we're actually working for.
Brandon, what are the greatest challenges that you have with the Development Authority as far as people wanting to maybe locate here or relocate here?
The biggest thing I think is people don't pick up the phone and ask anymore. I know Mayor Skinner talked about this as well and we've had lengthy discussions. A lot of people just Google, right? So when they look at small Upstate County and small Bacchanum, they think that we can't give them anything. And, you know, I, I think that's the opposite. We have a lot to offer here. We have land, we have, you know, viable power, sewage, you know, water, all of these things. Actually, that was the company that we're working on bringing in additional industry type that's local. They said to the, the local company, well, we didn't even know that you guys had this stuff to offer. We didn't know you had 10 acres of land. We didn't know you guys could provide, you know, help with permits. We didn't know that you guys could have sewer, water, rail. You know, they were very impressed that a small West Virginia town had such a great railroad. So I think it's marketing, really, Mr. Thomas. I think we just need to find a way to market Upstate County properly because we don't get the phone calls anymore to ask if there's land. Ask, you know, what we can do, ask how we can help.
Do people talk about the school system at all, ever?
Some, yeah. You know, the school system is definitely something that's looked at. And, you know, a lot of high-end jobs, that's the first thing that they're going to look at if they have kids. You know, school system, do you guys have a place to, you know, go to the gym and have, you know, sports and stuff like that? It's a big talk in our, you know, area. And I think, you know, with the current leadership, we're moving forward. And that's the best thing that we can tell them. That, you know, it might have slipped. It might not be the best that it used to be. Because when I came through Upstate County, you know, an education meant something. But, you know, obviously sadly, that wasn't the case for a while. But just pushing forward, I think, is a major thing. And they can see that. You know, they can see the test scores going back up. They can see, you know, attendance going up. They can see, you know, all the work that we've put in. Because we are proud of our town.
True. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
The housing study. The state study, did they do the complete housing assessment?
They are doing a complete study. But that's why we actually are doing the Upstate County local study as well. Because we want it not to just be, you know, general information. We want it to be very specific to Upstate County.
If I recall, the council agreed to give some financial support for a housing study.
Yes.
How's that being encumbered?
We are doing the Upstate County Housing Study as well, which is going to use those funds to use that.
As far as percentage, what percentage of the study would you say is completed?
Well, the housing study for the state is almost complete. As I said, it'll be done in March. They have not started our local study yet because of that. So they would not move forward with ours because they were doing the statewide study. They just didn't see why they would do ours before that. Because a lot of the data that's going to come from this, our study, comes from the state study as well.
And that's what you'll, you'll be using the funding to go back to that same organization to do the local?
Yes, because it would not make sense. And we, we shopped around, we looked to try to see, you know, what was the best price? What was the best actual overall results, right? But it didn't make sense for us to spend, you know, quadruple the amount when they're already doing that study that then they can just hone in on Upstate County and actually get a better and more specific approach to us rather than go to some other organization and get basically the same exact study that they're going to hand you from the state.
The statewide study was an unknown variable at this time last year.
Yeah.
Well, 10 or 15 years ago, I can't remember what the date was. There was a study done by either Development Authority and/or Mountain Cap from an organization up at WVU. I don't know if you've ever seen that study, but it's fairly old now.
Yeah, it's, it's a little obsolete. So that's why, you know, I believe that we were working as a team, you know, when Mayor Skinner and I were there to try to get a new housing study. Because we felt like when all these people came in to develop, it just wasn't useful to them.
It may have been even 20 years ago. I can't remember the date, but it was done.
Yeah.
And Kathy McMurray was here, well, she's still here now, but the Mountain Cap.
Yeah, Kathy and I have had lengthy discussion of the need of a new housing study. And, you know, she's grateful that the state housing study is coming. But as Mayor Skinner said, this was an unknown at the time. And, you know, I pushed and pushed and pushed this organization to try to see why they weren't responding to us about, you know, our local housing study. And then they were like, hey, we've been waiting to tell you we're doing a state housing study, so.
And housing studies don't have tremendous shelf life. I mean, as population trends change. And what really brought it to light is we applied for a, for lack of a better term, a blighted neighborhood grant last year. Or was it last year or year before? And, and we, it was the year before. And one of the things, what it was is was to basically go into neighborhoods and pick property addresses to do kind of a facade grant match to provide resources to help with bringing up properties within the community. But one of the, one of the, basically the number one reason why we were not awarded that grant is this, is Upstate County, this community did not have an active housing study. So we knew going forward, we were not going to be successful in obtaining any grant funding if we did not have a housing study, the ability to show that.
Yeah, and the potential that we have because of the study is going to be like grants like that.
A question maybe for both of you in your research. How often should we be doing a housing study?
They told me basically every five to seven years. You know, that's kind of what, you're going to see all those trends change and things like that, so. And the Build West Virginia that the state has put on to try to give some incentives and tax breaks to some of these people that are developing, one of the things that they're looking for is you to have a countywide housing study. So we're actually looped in with Randolph County and a little bit of Lewis County. There's a mile radius that's connected to that. So we've put all our data in with those directors to be able to kind of use that area together. And the major part of having people come to your county instead of another one is having that housing study so that when they come and they say, okay, here's all the locations that I can get this grant funding for the Build West Virginia. Tell me why I should build here and what I need to build here. So that is.
Idea, once this one's complete, just go ahead and earmark five to six years, another one.
I think that would be very helpful in moving forward with finding out what we need with housing.
I think one of the practical challenges we have is the lack of our involvement in halfway houses and opportunity houses. We have a lot of restrictions about what we can and cannot do. And I know that's a, that's an issue for many communities that when you get one of these houses in the neighborhood, oftentimes it's not, you know, at a standard that would be acceptable for the neighbors. And I think that's something we have to really deal with for the future.
Brandon, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
We appreciate the, the update and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. And we'll look forward to continued partnership in the future.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good evening.
Be safe.
All right. We are ready for our financial report. Ambrose is coming up to the microphone.
My report's pretty short, so. Don't contact me about that.
Short for now, but fear not, council members. We've got budget sessions on our horizon, so.
I was going to tell you that and remind you, because you already have.
This is the big setup.
So fund balances in the enterprise funds for January 31st, Waste Collection Board Money Market and Checking, $1,800,000. And their CDs remain the same, $318,000. And a letter of credit for $64,000. Water Board Money Market and Checking, $1,033,000. And their working capital savings is at $912,000. Sanitary Board Money Market and Checking, $967,000. Their working capital and CDs are at $476,000. And the Stormwater Funds at $171,000. As you mentioned, we're working on the general fund draft budget for the fiscal year '25, '26. Working sessions begin Monday, the 24th, and then you'll have another one on the 28th. And those will be at 9:00 AM. Barbara and I will be attending a state auditor's budget workshop on Tuesday. We are also looking at some technology, and I may have mentioned this last meeting, solutions for the meeting agenda. So there, you may end up with a more, a better way to flow through that agenda when you're sitting there. I got a portal on that one. The Colonial Arts Center Board approved use of the space for the CAC for local musicians that have their own original music. This, these are free events. They want to have three months, one Saturday each of those months. WVU Medicine St. Joseph Hospital donated funds last year to go towards performances and education. So some of those funds will be used. So the CAC, City of Bacannon, and WVU Medicine St. Joseph Hospital will be helping to sponsor those free events. The goal of that is to let, it's called Local Music Night in Bacannon. It's to foster the vibrant, vibrant music scene in Bacannon and give those local musicians a venue to perform and grow their craft. Bryso Loughlin is helping to organize that event. The shows will be held once a month, like I said, on Saturday for the next three months. There'll be a show March the 1st, April the 5th, and May the 31st. And those will be from 7:00 to 9:00 PM each of those nights.
Any questions for Ambie relative to the financial report?
When those shows, are they for free?
They're free. To all ages too. And I forgot to tell you about your bills, I'm sorry. Criminal Justice Police Academy Training for Chris Spotlow, our new officer, 1,500. Jenkins Ward for tires and taillights, 3,900. Amazon laptops for the cruisers, 3,700. Scotty U Center basketball t-shirts, Casey Earle's, at 3,600. Target Solutions Learning LLC, which is a fire department software, 3,300. And then you're going to see several bills to advantage from, that we pay advantage of technologies for cameras that you approve. And those are for the impound lot, the city parks, walk trail, dog park, street department, jawbone, and theater.
All right, that segues right into Section A under Ambie's financial report. Is there a motion to approve the bills? Motion by Pam, is there a second? Second by Rob, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. If it's not opposed, motion carries. Up next is our new Public Works Director, Ethan Croston, who's here with us this evening to deliver a report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So the street department, we've been dealing with the weather or some more bites and snow this week. In between the iffy weather, we've been working on the jawbone stage. I'm hoping to get the support wash for that port within the next couple of weeks. And same thing with Island Avenue. We have about 200 feet of sidewalk formed up and ready to pour as soon as we get some decent weather. So that project is moving along pretty well. And other than that, we've been cleaning up debris from some of the high winds and the cemeteries and around town. And we have began installing some of those cameras that we, you've just seen the bills for. We have the police impound lot installed and all of them at Waste and Street Department will be moving to the sanitary and water departments and parks next. With the waste department, we took some samples for the NPDS permit I've been reporting on. We haven't received those yet. I'm sure that they will come back fine. And we've been working on evaluations and wasting water departments. We're going to try and complete street and sewers next week. And Dakota has nearly completed the Long-Term Control Plan for Waste. He just sent it to me this afternoon. It'll be on the waste board in the first week in March. For the sewer department, we've received the parts and rebuilt drive gear for the clarifier that's been out since August. I'm hoping to get it back up and running within the next couple of weeks also, weather depending. As I mentioned last meeting, we had some issues at one of our pump stations. We have them remediated. Costs a little bit of money, but it's up and running and everything is good to go now. And we submitted the 2024 Influent Infiltration Reports to the DEP and 2024 Biosolids Report to the EPA. For the water department, they've been continuing to look at evaluations or continue to evaluate repair options to the dam. We've been having some issues with the valve. It's nothing that's going to affect the water supply, but something that needs addressed. And continuing to work on the equipment distribution system leaks and mechanical issues and expand their GIS network. leaks and mechanical issues, and expand their GIS network. For the engineering report, contract A for the tenor con brewster station wasn't able to begin this week, and construction activities are going to continue through this month. And then the punch lists will be generated for the FEMA has been greatest in grant number two. The perimeter security fence was installed around Madison Street left station, and the last reimbursement invoice to FEMA has been submitted, and we'll be ready for the mayor's signature. For FEMA Grant Number One, the fence was installed around the PSC generator on December 21st also. And the only work remaining is to install handrails around the platform, which should be done by the end of March. And for the WVDO H tab program, where we are, we have interview set up for surveying services. We have to select from pre-approved list of certain firms to complete the necessary fieldwork for that project on Morton Avenue. And I think that is all that I have for the report.
Any questions for Ethan before we talk about street paving? Before you, you have a list here. It's a, it's a loose page, and then right behind Ethan's report, you've got a more detailed front and back illustration. But these are the streets that have been identified as the highest need areas of attention. Those will be Rigger Avenue, East Lincoln Street, Maple Street, the southern part of Randolph Street, Railroad Avenue, South Canola Street, just the part, the portion that the city has, Richie Street, Upper Drive, Lower Drive, and Rustic Drive. You can see that Ethan has, based on what the city equipment is capable of doing, and what our crews would be capable of doing, has broken this down as to what the city in-house operations can complete versus what we would need to contract out. The contracted out portion, because of its width for sure, South Canola Street between Wendy's and First Community Bank, Richie Street, Upper Drive, Lower Drive, and then Rustic Drive because, really because they're just over there already. Rustic Drive's located behind Upper and Lower Drive. City contracted or city in-house work would be Rigger Avenue, East Lincoln Street, Maple Street, the southern part of Randolph Street, and Railroad Avenue. You can see the costs there, and then the length and the width of the streets as well. On the spreadsheet in the packet, you can see Ethan has it broken down as to what the comparison cost is in-house versus, versus by contractor, and then some notes as well. Do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
The only thing that I would like to add is sometimes asphalt is difficult to get for sure how many tons you're going to use. So I would suggest that, I believe that we would be more than comfortable financially completing all the streets from the suggested list. I would like to do all the contracted ones first, get that invoice back, and then get out with the city crews to complete the ones listed, to make sure that we have the funds in case we come back a little high, we come back a little low, we might be able to add a couple more.
And you're talking about funds that are already budgeted.
Yes, this has already been allocated for paving. We had $200,000, I believe, at the beginning of the year, and the fall of one of the meetings, we moved over another four, approximately, like $400,000. And then in the fall, we spent $180,000. So that's how we got to the remaining.
You said around $444,000, $443,000 was.
$443,000, yes.
Yeah.
Is what's in the budget for paving right now.
That we can get going as soon as asphalt's available and you can get contracts. So that's why you need us to give you.
And that's why I've been putting it on now, and paving season seems like a long ways away, but there, the contractor's schedule fills up quickly, and some of these are downtown. I would like to get them done early in the season. I think it would be, save some patchwork, save some potholes.
Mayor, you, you mentioned you know all the streets in Buchanan except Lightburn.
That's right.
That's not my jurisdiction. Are you comfortable with this list that's presented?
I am, yeah. I've, I've been out scouring streets, looking for priorities, and I am comfortable with this list. I think on the contractor, I think we would all agree that South Canola Street is probably our biggest priority, especially with Strawberry Festival coming up, the summertime activities, and being such a hot-traffic area. It is in bad shape, and, and, and the work, all the other work that's been done downtown, that, that's our, that's our kind of missing tooth right now.
Yeah.
I've, I've made the comment in the past, if you want to see the condition of the roads, the streets within the city, just come on a bicycle and ride through town. It's much more revealing than driving in a car. And I applaud this. This needs to be done. And I think it's, it's good to see us moving forward. Hopefully, we can get to all of them pretty soon, huh?
Hopefully so. And a lot of these are, they're not just randomly picked. They're all, there was a asphalt study done. They gave us a RSL rating, which is a lifespan rating for, it scans all the streets, measures the cracks, potholes, depth of potholes, and it'll give you back that rating for the life of the asphalt. So that's where a lot of these came from. These are in the zero to two range, most of them, so.
A large project that we're going to have to be thinking about, not right immediately, but coming up in the next couple of budget years, is Camden Avenue is going to need an overhaul from the corner of Mead Street all the way up to where the island ends at Montgalia Street. It is, it, it almost fell apart on us, this, and we, we have cold patched it. We're not out of the woods with it. We're going to have to go back in and fill several potholes, but we, we, that's going to be a major project. And that is obviously going to have to be bitted out, but that is, that hasn't been done in quite some time, and it's starting to really show its age. So.
I'd just ask on the contracts, when they're written, that you put liquidated damages on?
Yes. So this was actually already bid out in August of this year, and that is what's part of the bid for liquidated damages.
Okay, because a couple, three years ago, we.
Yeah.
Lincoln Street.
Were banging our heads on the wall.
Yeah, that's why I think they have 30 days to finish it and then.
Yeah.
What happened with Lincoln?
It just took forever. They, they.
They kept dropping us down a little list.
And they, they take other jobs and just leave us high and dry, and then they didn't really do a great job, particularly around the drains. So, but we did not have that in our contract at the time, so. Ethan, thank you. Council, this is on the agenda as an actionable item, just essentially to give our official seal of approval of the list of streets priorities for the 2020, 2025 street paving projects priority list. Either to a motion that we approve what's been discussed. Motion by Randy, second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like a sign of opposed, motion carries. Ethan, get to work.
Thank you.
Go blow the snow off the streets again.
We'll start paving tomorrow. Just a quick note for the citizens' benefit. Yes, you have seen some holes patched. It has not, they've not been patched with asphalt. It's too early for the, for the plants to be open. What is, what, what's been used is what's called cold patch. So it does not, it, it's just, it's a temporary solution to keep people from losing tires in holes. But as soon as we go right back over it with another snow, it starts to wear away again. So this, once, once the plant's open, we will get some permanent fixes in some of these bigger potholes scattered around town. But we wanted to at least try to put a temporary solution in place because it, they, the potholes got on us faster than other years just because of the severity of the winter. So, okay. We are down to the City Police Department report. Chief Gregory is with us once again. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hello again. Mayor, I just have a couple items under my regular report, one of which does, an effort that has really been consuming much of our time, and that is our efforts on our reaccreditation for Kalia. As I've mentioned in a number of meetings in the past, we are in year four of our four-year reaccreditation cycle. Our year four web assessment actually begins tomorrow. So I've been spending a lot of time here recently with the assessor. Our assessor this round is a former police chief from the western region of Virginia, who has been an assessor with Kalia for a number of years. His name is Jeffrey Dodson. I've been in contact with him over the course of the last month, prepare our files for the assessment that begins tomorrow. We do have a full set of files. Kalia operates on what's known as continuous compliance, meaning that when you are assessed, they don't just look at your current year, they look at four years of proofs, which we have a full four years of proofs for this cycle, which constitutes well over 2,000 uploads to Power DMS. So we prepared those for this assessment. It begins tomorrow and will last until Saturday, March 1st. I do anticipate the initial report after the weekend, after the initial review of the files, I'll get an initial report on Monday, where we'll begin consultation and continued work on the files as we work on closing out year four at the end of next week. This is all in preparation for our next assessment. Year four is a quick turnaround. We, kind of a double whammy, if you will. So in addition to a year four web assessment, in one month from, from now, we will have an onsite assessment, where two more assessors will come and review our files and review our facilities and interview much of our staff. Mayor, I'm sure they'll want to talk to you and the leadership of the City of Buchanan, just as they did in the last initial assessment. So anticipate that. That begins on March 31st and will last that week into April. This will prepare us for our presentation to the Kalia Commission, which will occur later this summer, for consideration for reaccreditation. We're confident moving forward. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the last three years, the last three assessors. So I'm very confident with our files as we move into these final phases. So as we round out the next month or two, I'll have much more to report back to council on our status with that. Mayor, the final thing on my regular report, as Steve mentioned earlier, with our VIBs program, we began our Citizens Police Academy just this past Tuesday. And for a number of years, we have used the Citizens Police Academy as a training module, as an, as an initial training for our VIBs members. And so that's its original intent, but we've all, also in tandem with that, we've also opened up, and this is in the spirit of community policing, we've also opened up the academy to members of the community who maybe are not interested in joining VIBs or committing time to VIBs, but they're interested in learning more about the police department. We certainly welcome them with open arms into the academy, and we have a number of interested individuals who, in addition to our VIBs, are part of that academy this round as well. In fact, there's actually more people from the community than VIBs members being trained right now. So the police portion of the Citizens Academy in the last six weeks, with, again, this last Tuesday being week one, each week constitutes a block of instruction that looks at various aspects of law enforcement in general, and the Buchanan Police Department specifically concerning our operations. So we look forward to educating the public. One of the greatest takeaways I've always said with this, in addition to the education that, that we provide, and that's getting to know everybody on a personal level. It's our intention to involve most, if not all, of our staff throughout this process. Everybody has an area of expertise. So as the respective blocks of instruction come forth from one week to the next, we involve different members of our staff. This is an opportunity for members of the community to get to know their officers on a personal level, to get to engage in dialogue with them, ask them questions. And I've always found that's the greatest takeaway from these programs. So again, that's going on until March 25th. Even though we start in, we, we maintain open enrollment. So if there's any interested party that wants to come to any of the other Tuesdays, it's every Tuesday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Training Room. Certainly any member of council that may be interested in that, invite you to come out. There's, there's a lot of good material that we'll cover over the course of the next five weeks.
How about college students? Are they welcome also?
They are absolutely, absolutely, yeah. In fact, as I reported last meeting, we have a number of interns that are currently with the police department, and they try to be active as well with the Citizens Academy, as their schedule allows. Mayor, that's all I have under my regular report.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Gregory thus far? All right, let's go down through, if you recall, last meeting, this wound up on the agenda, but we asked to table it to this meeting so that Chief Gregory could provide some additional information and answer any questions that might arise. And this is, we're, we're in authorization for the Buchanan Police Department peer liaison to utilize City of Buchanan vehicle for official duties.
Yes, sir. As you know, we've had a peer liaison embedded with the Buchanan Police Department through a partnership with First Choice Services since last April. Erica Bennett has been our peer liaison during this time. She came back to council to report on, on her activities and her duties in, in the fall. It's our intention moving forward to have her to come periodically to council and give updates as to what has come on. As we've mentioned many times in the past, she's very busy, hit the ground running really from day one, in that she focuses on a broad range of different issues instead of being singularly focused. So among those include substance use disorder, homelessness and housing issues, and behavior issues. She has, through her connection with First Choice Services, she has a number of connections to resources throughout the state to provide assistance. With the overall goal being getting folks that are suffering with these needs off the street and into either housing or treatment, or whatever resources that they need to, again, get off the street and get back into a productive lifestyle. So she's seen a lot of success with this over the course of almost a year now. Part of her duties include, in addition to attending regular community meetings around town and various functions around town, I know today she was delivering some food to different individuals that were in need. She also provides transports to individuals who are either seeking shelter because of homelessness or treatment because of substance use disorder. In fact, just over the past, just the past week, she's provided four transports to individuals to treatment facilities at different points around the state. Most of those are nowhere close to Buchanan. She took two individuals just two days ago to Point Pleasant. She has been utilizing her personal vehicle for this and receiving reimbursement from First Choice Services for her mileage. However, during the course of all these activities in the last year, she's put well in excess of 7,000 miles on her vehicle. So certainly wear and tear on her personal vehicle has, has become a concern of her, of hers. Part of this program, we, we maintain open communication with First Choice Services, as well as the other partner agencies throughout West Virginia who have peer liaisons through this program that are embedded with their departments as well. Those other agencies include two peer liaisons with the Wheeling Police Department. One is placed with Charleston Police Department, certainly one with us, and then there's one, the most recent in the last three or four months, is with the Weston Police Department. All of the other agencies provide a vehicle for their peer liaison to perform their official duties. Again, much of the same of what I just described as, as what Ms. Bennett does. So what we're requesting in light of the, the concern of the wear and tear that's being placed on, on Erica's vehicle, is for council to authorize her using a City of Buchanan vehicle. We do have a vehicle available. If you recall, we had taken out of police service a few years ago, a Ford Explorer that was once a cruiser and is now being utilized by our VIBs volunteers. I would recommend that if council would authorize Erica's use of a city vehicle, that she use that vehicle. And obviously, VIBs would still use it as needed, and she would coordinate with VIBs concerning those uses. But VIBs use of that vehicle is situational, and it's generally on a case-by-case basis, whereas her use of the vehicle would be more on a daily basis, certainly with those activities that I just described. I think by allowing her to use that vehicle, it would give it more life instead of sitting and waiting for the next, the next VIBs activity. So I think it would be a win-win for that vehicle, as well as saving wear and tear on her vehicle as well. The gas, the maintenance of the vehicle, I feel that we could absorb, especially the daily costs into our existing budget. If there are any additional costs, certainly with transports, if she has to take a longer trip and accrue more gas mileage on the vehicle, I feel that funding from our opioid settlement funds could help to cover those costs. And I know Ambie and I have talked, we've looked at that. That is an allowable cost under the opioid settlement funds if it should come to that. So that's something that I think we could absorb and not accrue any additional costs to the city beyond what we already have. So that's, I'm seeking council's permission to.
You want a motion to that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that one.
Any questions?
First Choice, like, just what all, are they a part of in this scenario? They reimburse her miles.
Yeah, they do.
And they can't do that if we're using a Buchanan vehicle?
Correct. Correct. So, so First Choice Services is actually the employer. They received a grant from the Department of Health for the peer program. And the funding that they received was for six positions, and as a. And as I described, so far, they've been able to fund five throughout the state of West Virginia. So by virtue of this grant, Erica is actually First Choice, a First Choice Services employee. But through a memorandum of understanding between the City of Buchanan and First Choice Services, they embed their employee with us to work with us on a daily basis. Really, the idea behind that is by being embedded with the police department, that really gives her a grassroots approach to a lot of these issues, because we, as police officers, will often encounter those first and foremost in the community and are aware of these issues and can really put her in closer connection to these to achieve that overall goal. So while she's their employee, she's embedded with us, as I described earlier, all of the other programs provide kind of as an in-kind match to this memorandum of understanding with First Choice Services. They provide a vehicle for the use of the peer. It's just with us, she was using her own vehicle but getting reimbursement from First Choice Services. If we provide the vehicle just as the other agencies are, they wouldn't reimburse the mileage. That would be an in-kind match that the city's making into this program. But again, I feel we can absorb it into either the regular budget or the opioid funds.
How long has Erica been with First Choice?
She's, she began last April, so just short of a year, and it is a three-year grant. So it will be up for consideration in 2027 as to whether or not it's going to be extended.
My only question would be liability.
I want to speak to that.
I know, I know that we have, and I think Ambie can probably expand upon this, we have a policy that covers our volunteers. We have a number of VIBs volunteers that utilize the vehicle as well, and I know that they fall under the expanded policy that we have for drivers of city vehicles. And I would anticipate that Erica would fall under the same policy.
I'm not sure, well, perhaps she would fall under the same policy. She'd have to be added as a driver on our insurance for sure. As far as the transport of persons, we have a bus that transports youth every day, so that's not been an issue with the insurance so far.
She just has to be added too.
Yes, we'd have to list her as a driver, just like I do the VIBs. I have to list the VIBs as drivers with her.
I have a list of questions.
Will the vehicle remain on our premises when it's used?
Yes, yes. The vehicle is parked at the police department. It would remain on our premises when it's not in use. Erica would only use it for duty purposes. So when she comes to work, if she needs a vehicle to go to a meeting or to go to a call, she would use it, and obviously, she would continue the transports with that vehicle. But it would always come back to the police department to be checked back in.
So who has first priority, the VIBs or her, that vehicle?
Well, I think it would depend on the circumstances. I mean, I think that, in the grand scheme of things, that there needs to be coordination, and that's understood. I've talked to Steve about that, the coordination with VIBs as to when it's needed. But if, obviously, if an emergency situation would pop up and demand Erica's response for an emergency, say, an emergency shelter transport or an emergency, usually when you have folks that are taking to treatment, it's generally not something that waits. It's something that has to occur right then and there. So that would take precedence because of the emergency nature of the situation.
They obviously, First Choice obviously realizes that she has to travel, because they're agreeing to reimburse her for those miles. So from the get-go, they've expected her to use her personal vehicle.
Right.
Right, okay. I'm a little partial, just because I'm a contractor myself, and my mileage rate is the only thing that I have to reimburse the wear and tear on my vehicle. It's all included with mileage and everything else.
Sure. I know it did come up in our initial discussion with First Choice Services prior to last April. For about three or four months, we met and really worked on the details of the program. And I know the, a lot of the initial discussion from First Choice was whether or not we could provide a vehicle. And they, again, they gave examples, as what I've become privy to throughout the networking opportunities that we've had with other agencies. But they, just from the outset, they gave the example that generally, agencies will provide that vehicle as an in-kind match. And of course, I spoke at the time, and we, really wasn't an option. I didn't really consider the VIBs vehicle at the time. And so they agreed, based on my response to that, to cover that. But I know it's repeatedly come back to my attention that we're the only agency not knowing it, and it's becoming a wear and tear on her vehicle. And so that's just brought concern to me, and that's what I come to council tonight with, with that concern.
I have a proposition of the position. I think it's a good thing. But if I personally tried to do that with my employer, they would be like, tell me to damn saying it.
Would, should the other counties that are participating provide a vehicle?
Yes, sir.
So is it dedicated to that person, or is it a multi-use, shared vehicle?
To my understanding, it's dedicated to that position. So ours would obviously be multi-use for VIBs and still for that purpose.
I would also observe that, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was sort of a pilot. This is new.
Yes.
And so, I mean, it could be a little bit of learn-as-you-go with, I mean, yes, it may have started out with use your own vehicle, but it could be, just as you go along, you learn things, and maybe moving forward, that it's been determined that that isn't the best way forward. I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I'm spitballing, because if I remember correctly, we started this kind of at the ground level of this, of this project.
We did. And Mayor, I think that's a fair assessment, you know, from the outset, last winter, during the initial conversations, as we, you know, we use some models in terms of what the program was going to look like, but really, it was situational with City of Buchanan because it was such a ground-level approach. When the, when the program began, we were one of two agencies in the state through First Choice Services. Now, there are other programs that have peers, but specifically through First Choice Services, it was just us of willing from the outset. And then the other Charleston and Weston have since come on over the, over the intervening months.
It was a good presentation, I thought.
Yes.
I'm all for, I mean, individually, the liaisons, I'm confident have limited resources personally. As long as we can verify that the insurance and the liability with our carriers, that if there is an incident to or from, that the city's protected, that's my view.
Sure.
And that's easily followed up.
Any other questions or comments on the subject matter?
I'll still make the motion.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Thomas that we approve the request to allow our peer liaison to use a City of Buchanan official vehicle for her duties. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Rob Zulliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. That motion carries unanimously. All right?
Thank you.
Now, we got to talk about our favorite thing in the entire world. More interviews are probably on our horizon. The Police Civil Service Commission has recommended the top three candidates for our review, and they are as follows: Cole William Bender, Jason Allen Kelly, and Ethan Thomas Dowling. We need to set a time to interview these candidates, and I think, based on Teresa and Matt, and Teresa and I's conversation today, earlier the better. First week of March, I think you're looking at, did we determine the third, I think, at 1:00?
Yes.
And I will provide lunch to those of you that want to come at 12:30. We will get, and we'll get started right at 1:00 with our interviews so that we can not take up the entire afternoon. So if you'd like to come at 12:30, I'll provide lunch.
Can we get lobster with way maybe?
Yeah, I'll call the Wonder Bar and we'll just come.
We're going to discuss that.
Yeah. So anyway, 1:00 interviews on Monday, March 3rd, so hopefully, you're able to do that. We will interview all three back-to-back-to-back, as we always do, and hopefully, we'll find candidates. And the reason why, once again, we're pressed for time, we need to meet a deadline for the West Virginia State Police Academy that takes up in May, so.
We're looking for one this time? One?
Two, two. Looking for two. So hopefully, there are two viable candidates.
Are you giving them one hour or 45 minutes or?
No, we're, we're not, about 30 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So Monday, March 3rd, mark that on your calendar. I'd entertain a motion that we, as council, accept from the Police Civil Service Commission, those three names that I read to you, each scoring 87, 82, and 80 respectively, that we interview them on that Monday. Is there a motion to that effect?
We can get a motion.
Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Still move.
Second by Thomas, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. And now for the next hour and a half, we will hear the.
Yes, you have. It's amazing.
It is.
So for the next 30 seconds, we will, we will hear the annual report. Crimes down, things are good. All right, good.
Mayor, I'll hit the highlights in the report, obviously. If there's questions, I'll entertain those. Council should have been provided an advanced copy of the report for, also for members of the public. We do place our annual reports on the Buchanan Police Department website, BuchananPolice.com, under the Statistics tab. I believe we have at least 10 years of statistics on there now, so you can look from one year to the next. But the 2024 report was just placed on there here in the last couple of days. As has been the case for the last several years, the report comprises statistics from our own officer reports, as well as those from our records management system and our 911 center. In addition to that, different sections of the report will look at our K-9 program and the deployments that occurred through the year 2024, as well as an annual report from the Mountain Region Drug Task Force that we are a member of. The statistics from the task force comprise not only Buchanan, but the task force as a whole, which comprises about nine counties in the central region of West Virginia. Beyond that, the annual report also consists of three analyses that we submit to CLEA. As I mentioned earlier, the, many of the uploads and reports that we provide as part of our accreditation process include analyses of our data, and that includes uses of force, post-pursuits, and bias-based policing. Those analyses occur in conjunction with our annual reporting at the beginning of the year for the, for the previous calendar year. Those three reports are included with this packet as well. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, the VIBs annual report is part of the BPD annual report as well. As you mentioned, with the statistics, generally, what I will do, and again, as I've done with several years in the past, I will not only report on the 2024 activity, but I'll give a three-year trend, looking at trends in types of calls, types of crimes that we take reports on, types of arrests that we make. And so across the board, really, from criminal activity, accidents and such, really are seeing consistency. It's either, it's either similar to or down from the previous year and previous years. We've actually seen a downward trend in our activity really since COVID. It was kind of the turning point. And I know this is one thing that, in addition to a lot of these analyses and the proofs that we upload to CLEA, we also, we also complete what's known as a CEMRAS report. CEMRAS stands for the CLEA Information Management Reporting System. And that's an annual report in two parts that we provide to the CLEA assessors and the CLEA Commission. That's part of, I mentioned, that I would attend a hearing to consider our reaccreditation status. One of the things that they look at, in addition to the assessors' reports from these assessments, but they also look at the CEMRAS reports. And CEMRAS, as I mentioned, is in two parts. The first part is a statistical analysis, a quantitative overview of the activity of the Buchanan Police Department, if you will, that has much of the same data that you have before you tonight in the annual report. And then the second part of the CEMRAS report is a qualitative report, that's known as an agency status report, where we answer questions concerning accreditation. So those reports are before the commissioners when I appear before them, and we answer, I know Mr. Sanders was heavily involved in our initial meeting with the commission a few years ago, and you saw that the questions very heavily come from those reports. So one thing that, with these, with this downward trend, our last, our year three assessment was just last August. I had a lot of questions from the assessors as to why. And so, you know, responded to that. Our response was multifaceted, because you can't really place a singular response to, to that downward trend in data. Our analysis showed a couple of main things. One, that there's been a downward trend since COVID. But two, we've had some staffing issues over the years with some turnover over the past five years, so that may very well have contributed to some of the, some of the activities. But also, we also pointed out our heavy involvement with the Drug Task Force, which, again, as you see in the Drug Task Force numbers, is very, very involved in our region and has been. We've been a member of this organization since 2018 and continues to see a lot of success. And a lot of that is because of the networking that we see through the opportunities extended to us through this task force with both local, state, and federal resources. So we've seen a lot of success in that regard. And I believe that our peer position is really, you know, I know it's still relatively new in the grand scheme of things, but I think that, over the course of the years to come, given what we've seen with her activity up to this point, I think that that will also lend into these downward trends, because I think a lot of her work is having a more positive effect on some of the criminal side of our activities. That's really the highlights, Mayor, across the board.
Ooh.
Well, I swear to God. Yeah.
Not quite 30 seconds, but.
We'll get, we'll get there. We're trending in the correct direction. So basically, I think the headline, appropriate headline for this when the papers cover it is "Citizens Commended for Good Behavior."
Very good.
So, all right.
And the chief too.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for Matt relative to the annual report? Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill reported earlier to me that he did not have anything for public consumption tonight. Everything he's working on is still in the developmental stages, some of which we've discussed in executive sessions, and he'll have more updates for us as some of those things come to fruition. We have no old business this evening, and so, under new business, you've got a couple of items to consider. Number one is the approval of the building and wiring permits. Mr. Riggers already indicated to me that he needs to abstain from that, so I'd entertain a motion that we approve the building and wiring permits as presented earlier this afternoon in your packet.
Still move.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries with noting Mr. Riggers' abstention of that line item. Next, we'll take, we can talk about these together, like. Ambie, do you want to report on what we have received officially last Friday, the 14th, was our deadline, but that also allowed for things postmarked as of that Friday. So everything should be in by this point as what, or of individuals and corporate interest for both positions.
There's one firm in the HR that has, has actually emailed me and said that they sent theirs, and I haven't seen it yet, so I'll call them tomorrow and find out what was going on there. Roughly, we have for the IT position around eight firms and 20. Roughly, we have for the IT position around eight firms and 20 individual applications. And then for HR, three firms, if we can locate where that went, and around 30 applications.
Come on.
I, I mean, I didn't review them because some are sealed, and I didn't want to open anything, and I really didn't want to know anything ahead of time. But probably wouldn't be a bad idea to set a, two or three council members on a committee, and we can weed through to sort out the ones that are maybe the.
Not qualified.
Right. Because I think you can do that. We always say that. That that would be a, I think would be a step if you want to do it that way.
So I've, I've been thinking about that, and so not to put anyone, we're willing to do this to, do you want to know who I, can I establish the committee tonight, or do you want me to talk to you all about it later?
Whatever you think is broken.
Because I've, I've not talked, I've not talked about the committee members until this point, but I, I would like to, to serve on that, Rob Zulliani and Jack Rigger and myself. Does that work?
Sure.
Are council members supportive of that committee?
Okay with me.
Okay with me.
Rob has to bring some zulz.
That's right. Pepperoni rolls, zulz.
You bring some money, Joe.
We will get a timeframe together when the, the four of us could sit down, and Barb's welcome, too. The three of us, for sure, because we have to keep it under three for a quorum sake, we'll find a time to, to sit down and review those and weed them out, and then we'll come back to council with a recommendation as to how to proceed forward from there. So they're most likely, I mean, we're going to, we will be in an interview standpoint with both. I mean, and this is, this is, this process, although, has taken leaps and bounds of where it started, we've, we've gone through the receiving of the information, now we've got a, it's, we're still not out of the woods, we've still got some, 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 some things to do and some, some processes to go through before we get there. But this is a good first step, and, and I'm glad we got a lot of interest. So that, that's important, so.
Yeah, that's quite a bit.
All right. I'm going to combine B and C into one. So I, I then basically with the motion I'm going to ask for is that council support the committee I just established and, and to charge this committee with, for lack of better terms, yes, weeding out some, but evaluating all of the applications that we have received. So that committee is, again, myself, Mr. Zulliani, and Mr. Rigger. Dave Thomas says motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pam, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Okay. We are down to council comments and announcements. I still call it that, you know, I'm the one that made the agenda remarks and announcements. Mr. Randall, we'll begin with you.
Just want to congratulate and thank our VIPS members. I, I've gotten to talk with Steve over the years and been very impressed with his volunteering and dedication to our community. Like to throw a, keep your neighbors in your, in your thoughts, check on each other in this cold weather. Can be very dangerous getting this cold, especially with the snow. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
I agree with him over the VIPS. I've, I've been a part of that since its inception. I think I've been every interview, maybe one, and so I'm glad we're going to continue that, and it's been successful, thanks to Matt and to Steve. It's been a good thing for the city. And also, I'm glad to see Mr. Tenny here from UCDA. I think that was a good thing, and I think that needs to be an annual thing to invite him here and report to the city what's going on.
Yeah. Well, as we're getting close to budget time, you know, it's good to have him.
Yes.
Present what's going on for council's consideration as we look to allocate funding there. But ideally, I think we'd like to have him more than once a year, but I mean, we all, we're all busy, and so. Mr. Rigger?
I just need to concur with the VIPS and congratulate them on their accomplishments and, and the future accomplishments. We know it's a great program. And Chief, good luck with Kalia. Having prepared for audits, I know how intense that assessment process can be, and, and certainly you'll come out the other end on March 2nd in flying colors. And so wish you well with that. Yeah, thank you for the list of paving, everything, it was, it was good. It's good to see we're moving forward with that. Ambi, Barb, Rob on finances.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I endorse what everybody else just said, and the, the Steve Wafkov has done a great job with working with Matt and keep up the good work. Appreciate all that it volunteered. I also would like to, at some point in time in the near future, we need to talk about the first do again, when JB's here, figure out what we can do to make sure that gets approved the right way. And also, I just want to recognize a few people that have been a really important part of our community for years and years, and Jim Smith passed away a couple of days ago. He was a professor over at Westland, Director of Physical Education and coached women's tasks. And I used to go fishing with him for 12 years in a row, and everybody I went fishing with is no longer here. But he was a great guy, also a military man, went in 1958 and parachuted into Route 11 when they were having a crisis. Also, Lola Godwin, she passed away this past week, and she and her husband Chuck were special people, and they have wonderful family members. Just say your prayers for them. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Rob?
I was just going to ask, I was out of town, but how did the pull or plunge go?
Thirty-seven or 38 participants, I think?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
Yeah, thirty-four.
Yeah, we're missing one vital.
And we're still collecting money. Right, Pam?
Yeah. Dave and I, other than Alicia Lappi raised the largest money.
And y'all won the costume.
We got the costume contest, and that water was daggone.
I think, I think.
Nobody, nobody asked me how long the date, so I guess it didn't do that. Did they see in your swimming trunks?
I think they did raise around 15, 16,000, something like that, so.
We raised a pretty good amount of money. As I said, I got some more money coming in from people that.
But as you noted, and I did note in a minute, you were disappointed you weren't able to figure it out.
But there's next year.
Yes, I'll be busy again.
We'll make sure we can figure something out.
And just, I'm glad that we're going to interview more candidates for the open two spots for police officers that worry, concerns me that we just, I know what it's like getting any kind of employees, let alone something that's that, you know, important and vital and needs that amount of training. And then, I just, I don't think you're allowed to retire soon either. I think you need to stay for multiple, many, many years to come, because I like, the reports are getting shorter from what I'm being told.
That's right.
I appreciate everything you do for the.
So if I want to retire, I just give my mom a report or?
Your first two or three reports were incredible.
I, I think, I think we'll know when he's ready, because when they do hit 30 seconds, I think that's when we, we, we'll know.
Well, he's appearing on the TV screen right now.
Anything else, Rob? Randy?
Well, I'll echo the VIPS program. I've had a chance to work with them from my city position, but also as a producer of events before I retired from my former life, and they were incredible. The Kalia program, you know, doing a great job, Matt, with that. I'm glad I got a front row seat that first year, because, oof, I, you know, it was intense, and you guys definitely held your own. We've kidded a couple of times. The mayor loves Lightburn Street, there's no doubt about it. But one of the VIPS is a gentleman named David Rowan, who's one of the tenants that I work with in, in the real estate business, and he's just a charm, he's just a great individual, and he dearly loves his involvement in VIPS. But we, we affectionately nicknamed, nicknamed him the mayor of Lightburn Street, because he always keeps us posted on all the activities going on over there. So if you're on Lightburn Street, the mayor and I, we all love Lightburn Street, but we do yield to Dave's position there, with great preference. Ambi mentioned a little bit about technology upgrade, which I know Councilman Rigger has been, you know, suggesting, so we are looking into upgrading our minute packages, possibly going to iPads and having electronic approach to it. And we are going to look at expanding our, our sound system in here. One thing that I've noted, that the meetings that we do have recordings of are great, but you know, it's tough, whatever, the microphones have to be shared. And some voices are strong, some voices are not as strong, and it's really tough to pick up some of the conversations and so forth. So our goal is for everybody to have their own microphone eventually and, and ask everybody to utilize them as we move forward. Final thing, we had a great, great activity, so a shout out to the Upshur County Youth Livestock Association. Their elimination dinner was at the event center this past week, there were around 500 people attended. It was a very successful event for the youth livestock folks. I know they, they had raised just a lot of money, you know, for that organization and so forth. They were a great, great group to work with, so, you know, we appreciate the affiliation we have with them. So that's it.
Thanks, sir. Indulge me for just a moment. Wild bill is, is no longer a figure from the past. If you are paying attention to what's going on at the state Capitol, wild bills are flying everywhere. Several have noted that, that we need to be concerned about that involve municipalities. A bill has been introduced at the state legislature that would, that would basically take away any and all oversight that a municipality would have over, over its fire department, regardless if it's municipal or not. So it would give that authority to the county commission. We would, we would essentially have to go to the county commission to ask for their blessing and permission of whatever we decide to do with hiring, with expanding, with buying a new truck, with, so you get, you get my gist. So that, that, I spoke with some of the, with the leadership of the Municipal League today. That is obviously a large topic of concern for the Municipal League and for many of us around the state. A, another one is, it has to do with some, with some BNO tax as we anticipated. There is some, some talk about if you have a sales tax, BNO tax cannot be charged at all. That, I don't know how much traction that will have after talking to Susan today. But A number one is House Bill 2007. There was a committee meeting today, the Health and Human Resources Committee in the House, lots of testimony was, was heard, both for and against the repeal of the certificate of need in the state. We, our position obviously is keep, 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 keep certificate of need in place. That protects our hospital. Without the certificate of need in West Virginia, our hospital is in great danger of, of closing. This has been a very challenging couple of weeks. It's been a challenging five years, but, but this, these past couple of weeks have been incredibly challenging for Skip Yulberg, for, for myself, for, for those who are on the front lines fighting, pardon my French, but fighting like hell for this. We are, we are in trouble, and we need everybody that can provide any sort of pressure to the state legislature to be, to, to be, to have their voice be heard. Tomorrow, I'm going to have Teresa send out a, a communication that came through the, through the, through the Buchanan chamber this week. So if you see those communications come, I wrote them, and so it's, it's, they're emails crafted, all you have to do is just put them in, in your, in your, in your new message, copy and paste the, the list of addresses into your BCC line. That way, they don't, everybody, it's not a large, it doesn't show up as like a large massive group message, and send, send it out, and everybody that's in that BCC, it's a carbon, line carbon copy, will receive that email. It, so basically, it's, it talks about the 21 critical access hospitals in West Virginia, what would happen to the 21 critical access hospitals in West Virginia if CON is gone and something else comes in and could easily put them out of business, because it represents a massive revenue swing. It's all about the Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement. Other, the, what the out-of-state lobbying groups are, are providing is a bit misleading. They're comparing us to states where, where 75 or so percent of the pay mix is from a corporate or private pay, sponsored pay. In West Virginia, it's actually the exact opposite. Seventy-five percent of the pay mix in West Virginia is, is from some sort of government subsidy, whether that be from PEIA, whether that be from Medicare or Medicaid. So there's far less opportunity for, for negotiation of rates when you have that kind of a makeup. They're also saying that if certificate of need is, is done away with, the opportunity for competition and expansion of services is going to be prevalent in West Virginia. No one's coming for us. This is not a place where it, it, it's, it looks good to make money if you're in the healthcare world. If St., if we lose St. Joseph's Hospital, nothing's coming on the back end to, to provide, to put a hospital in this community. We will just be without a hospital in this community. And that is a real factor, that's a real concern for a lot of places in West Virginia. So please keep the communications flowing to the Capitol. My inside sources say that what, that our efforts are working. We have been, we have been able to change some minds down there, but we've got more minds to change. We need 18 votes in the Senate, and we need 51 votes in the House. And so we are, we are fighting hard to get there. I will be in Charleston on Tuesday, meeting with a bunch of different delegates and senators about this. So my day is, is full on Tuesday. Again, there was a committee meeting today. There were, the lady, the brand-new CEO of Jackson General Hospital, which is a critical access hospital in Ripley, did a phenomenal job explaining the whole situation. But there are the Cardinal Institutes, and there are the Americans for Prosperity, and they have their facts and figures based on other states. And so that is, that is something that we have to, you know, just be prepared to combat. So, but again, it's, it's working, but we cannot let our foot off the gas. We need to continue to, to pelt with positive emails of please keep this in place, this is what it means to our community and, and other communities. So please be looking for that communication to come to you tomorrow, and please forward it along to the members of the, of the committee and to members of the House and Senate.
Are you getting good responses from other communities, Rob?
Yes, and I have called upon fellow mayors and council members that I know through the West Virginia Municipal League to lean on their delegates and senators from their communities to please be supportive of keeping certificate of need. One example is, is the mayor of Ripley, who's a dear friend of mine, she, she leaned hard on her delegation, and one was actually flipped his position on it. So that's, that's really important. We can reach out to people all over the state, and as Mr. O'Neill knows, anybody who's worked at the Capitol and works around, and we know, too, we're elected officials, if someone calls us from, from Parkersburg, are we, we're less likely to really pay a ton of attention to it versus if somebody calls us from Tucker Street. The nature of the, of the game is you listen to your constituents. So it's important to try to mobilize our connections in these communities that aren't in Upshur County and aren't in our region, to then lean on their, to their elected officials, because if that, if, if a vote matters, that's, that's where the rubber meets the road. So, but it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt to just get the message across as well. We got to hit it from all angles. So appreciate what everybody's done so far. Like I said, this is a challenge, but we are, we are not going down without a fight. We're, we're going to save this hospital come, come hell or high water, so that's, that's our goal, that's our plan. I will say this, and I did note this in my address when I read it last time, it was not meant to scare anybody, but the unintended consequence of anything, of hearing information like this, the hospital did go into a little bit of DEFCON 5 up there in the, in the wake of that, once the news articles came out of, oh my gosh, do we need to look for other jobs? The answer is no, no. Do not abandon ship. We're, we're working hard. We're working hard. The hospital's not closing tomorrow. Even if certificate of need is repealed, it's not closing immediately. There just is a chance if a threat comes in from another hospital that would locate within our 15-mile bubble. And we know that's a real possibility because there are signs at I-79 that say the future home of Mon Health, and that is within our 15-mile bubble. It is clear, just from some dialogue from our neighbors to the west, that the goal is to become the hospital for the region and to make this one not operate anymore. But we are, that's what we're, that's what we're fighting for. We're not going to let that happen. So again, appreciate that you indulging me for just a moment, but please, please keep it up and do everything you can to reach out to people that you know across the state to make, to make the voice known that we need to save our hospital. So with that, it's nine o'clock on the nose. Rodney, thank you for broadcasting us once again. Thanks, everybody, for being in attendance. And with that, I entertain a motion adjourned. All right. Have a good one.